All right, well, there is four of us, so we can do some things, huh? Well, thank you, everybody in attendance, and welcome to March 2nd Planning Commission Meeting. And we will start off today with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Tracy, can I get you to lead us in that?
Yeah. Everyone will repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the great God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start with the first item on the agenda tonight, which is the approval of lots of minutes. And so we have approval for minutes of October 7, October 13, October 4, 6, 13, 3, and 23, so quite a few of them. Just to clarify with legal, do we need to do individual motions for each one, or can we approve all minutes on the agenda as noted?
It depends entirely up to you guys.
Do you have any changes to that?
Okay. So with the body that we have here, commission members, if there's questions or concerns, then we can do them separately. If there's not, then we can make a motion to approve as indicated on the agenda.
Let's do them all at once.
Okay. Sounds like you're ready to do a motion, then.
Tracy.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our meetings on October 7, 13, November 4, January 6, and 13, February 3, and 23.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we don't have to do roll call votes on those, so we... Anybody opposed to the minutes? Let the record indicate there is nobody opposed. So the first item on our agenda tonight is the proposed zone change for the Newport Villa Village, excuse me, zone change, and we will hear from Mr. Anderson on that.
Thank you. So you all, I think, will remember the discussion that we had last month about the proposal to change the zoning and then approve a preliminary plat for a master plan development. You might just have to help me. I'm here anyway. Peter. Occasionally, our remote walks off. Copy of the plat here, I won't spend a lot of time talking about that initially, proposed as a, again, a master plan development. Should the R-19 zone be approved, this would conform to the zoning standards for the R-19 zone. So again, we talked a little bit about that last month, and as part of the discussion that we had, the commission raised the issue of future land use and whether or not it made sense to allow, by way of changing the zoning, all of the property to be developed residentially at this point in time. We know that there are plans in the works for potential interchange in the vicinity of this property with I-15 not being very far to the west, and from that discussion, staff took some direction that I think we followed, so I'm here tonight really to report back on, again, the direction they feel like we were given relative to the proposed zoning. Frankly, I think this really is a zoning issue more than a subdivision issue. If the zoning were to change to R-19, then the applicant essentially is entitled to a project approval, so I won't even spend a lot of time talking about that unless we get to that point. So with that said, you go to the next image, just a... This is kind of a schematic type of a view of what is currently planned for in the vicinity of the subject property right here. In 2012, Mountainland Association of Governments teamed up with UDOT and UTA to do an interchange study, not only for this location but others along the I-15 corridor south of Provo to see what was feasible. And as part of that study, they also looked at what the anticipated need in the future might be for interchanges, and I'll talk more about that in just a minute. But in short, and you can tell that really the notion of an interchange here and how that might be designed, it's still somewhat conceptual in nature. We would expect with an interchange that there would be some type of a traffic signal someplace, probably towards the western end of this property's frontage on Center Street, and then likely another signal at the intersection on the northeast corner of the development. So that's kind of the lay of the land relative to what we know, and I think kind of the fundamental issues that we talked about before. From a timing perspective, this is somewhat coincidental, but just last night, the city council approved a contract that we've entered into with CBC Advisors, Coldwell Banker Commercial Advisors, to provide consulting services for the city so that, among other things, we can identify sites that in the future they believe would be viable for retail uses. There are other things they're doing for us as well, but it's, I believe, the largest commercial real estate brokerage presence in the state of Utah. The specific brokers that are working on our projects, I know, are top-notch. They have exclusives with many of the retailers, the names that you'd recognize, restaurants, different groups like that, and we really feel like we're fortunate to have been able to have tapped into them as a resource, given the expertise that they have. So over the course of the past few weeks, I've corresponded with Steve Bowler. He's kind of their point person assigned to handle Spanish Fork's workload, and we've talked about this site. And without further ado, you can go to the next slide. I'm just going to go through a few different things now that I think are important for the commission to consider relative to the proposed zone change, and then we'll report back as well with our recommendation as staff. So in short, after a few discussions and Steve consulting with his colleagues in his office, he's found that should an interchange be constructed that follows that general alignment of what we looked at just a second ago, a property that's about 850 feet wide by about 650 feet deep would be excellent for commercial development, thinks likely even some type of a grocery anchored development, so probably talking about a retail user, maybe even approaching more the big box size. A lot of grocers these days are larger than 100,000 square feet, but something between maybe 50 and 120,000 square feet anchoring a development with the idea that all of the 12 acres would be utilized. In fact, as I talked with Steve about the development of this site, he said, "Well, what about the property just to the west?" Him looking at aerial photographs and not being able to see that, "Well, there's a church building under construction there," and we talked about that as well, and I really appreciate his candor. You know, he does understand the realities of different pressures for development and timing and things of that nature, but he was very specific and direct about giving us the advice that we're paying him to get, and there it is. So that was helpful. We also, incidentally, did talk about the concept of maybe trying to set aside part of the property for commercial development with the idea that it'd be appropriate to have another portion of it developed residentially, and just for what we've tasked him to look at, he was very quick to say, "That's not good enough." You know, if the city's really trying to preserve sites for future retail development, the entire property should be reserved, so I want to be clear about his recommendation, and that's what it is. And I also want to be clear about the fact that without an interchange, that doesn't carry any water at all. So maybe we'll talk a little bit more about that next slide. So again, by way of things to consider. And I already mentioned a little bit of history relative to at least the first study that was done to look at the prospect of having an interchange built at Center Street. Right now, that project is in what's called Phase 2 of Mountainland Association of Governments' Regional Transportation Plan. So Phase 1 goes from today to 2025. Phase 2 goes from 2026 to 2035, and then Phase 3 is the next 10 years out, and anything beyond that, they call a, what is it, concept phase? It's like, they're not even really going to put a pencil as to when other projects might be feasible, so...
Three land.
That's really what it is, yep. Phase 2. So with that being the case, there would be no funding available until at least 2025 for any meaningful work on an interchange at this location, meaning you couldn't start any environmental work, any kind of design work, or nothing of that nature through MAG's regular process until 2025. And at least today, the other big project that we have in MAG's Phase 2, the 2700 North Interchange, is a higher priority for Spanish Fork City. That's the one that we meet with our state legislators to talk about. That's the one that we feel is going to be needed soonest to help alleviate traffic issues in the north end of the city, and at least for today, that's our priority. That being said, I'm trying not to speculate much with anything that I say tonight on this, but I will speculate a little bit, knowing what the process is like in terms of being able to obtain funding for really big projects. The 2012 numbers for these two interchanges, the Center Street interchange was anticipated to be a $55 million interchange. 2700 North was just shy of that, so really high-dollar projects. We generally don't see cities get two of those types of projects done, you know, within a 10-year timeframe. There just hasn't been our experience. Could it happen? Absolutely. Another thing while I'm speculating, and it's certainly possible as well, that even though right now the 2700 North interchange is our priority, you know, things do change. It's possible that this might become the priority. We don't know, but to be clear, best-case scenario, if environmental work were to start in 2026 with this interchange, that process would take two or three years. Then you'd go through a year to get funding for design work, which would take a year. You'd go through a year to get a design put together, go out to bid. You're looking at closer to 2035 than 2025, and honestly, it's best-case scenario to get an interchange constructed where we're talking about. So that timing is something I want to be as clear as I can about, understanding that our crystal ball's not that clear, but we do know how long it takes to get a project like that built.
Dave, don't want to interrupt too much, but I think it's important right here. Had a discussion with the citizen. I don't know where they got their information, but as the hospital has been, the clinic down here on Arrowhead Road has been, I guess, in the building status now, that now that exit down there for improvement has had a higher priority from UDOT than what we had originally done, and so, I mean, there are only, what, between the proposed Center Street and Benjamin, mile, two miles, I don't know what it is, but... So have you heard anything about how that, maybe that emphasis has changed with the building of that clinic down there?
I haven't heard that, and honestly, I'd be really, really surprised if that were the case. I would, but I hadn't. I don't know. Have you heard anything?
I haven't heard anything, but maybe one side note that's coupled with that, the county's working pretty hard on extending a road from Elk Ridge, Salem, down through that area to get traffic to the interchange. So there's a priority on the MAG level and the county pushing that.
That's why I was asking the question, because I know we, as a city, have priorities that we kind of track and monitor, but sometimes we don't track maybe the priorities at our bordering areas as much as maybe we might need to.
That's true, yeah. And you've piqued my curiosity at least about how things might stack up. We know, for example, that Payson, environmental work is underway for a new interchange in Payson. They've got a leg up on us, so to speak, compared with what we'd like to see happen at 2700 North. Generally, we're aware of what's going on in our vicinity, just because if a project gets built in Payson, that's consuming, you know, short of the legislature working a miracle, that's consuming the funding that otherwise would be available for projects in our community. So we're usually somewhat in tune, at least with that, but we get surprised.
They just mentioned that, you know, that highway they mentioned, you know, coming to Salem, Elk Ridge area down through there, has always been kind of a thought process, but with the construction of the hospital, it's kind of been more than a thought lately. People have really pushed it, so...
On that road that Corey had mentioned, is that under construction now?
No, they're working through environmental issues and design and right away, but they have received some funding on that end of it, so, for MAG.
And I guess I... One of the big pictures that you showed a minute on that was the driving... One of the driving mechanisms with the Center Street was UTA's desire to continue the rail down this far, and I'm just wondering if they're going to take the rail down to Benjamin exit versus the Center Street exit, so...
The study that they did for us in 2012, the very same study, UTA was a partner on it, and in short, it found that if you had a stop at this location, the next stop that they would have because of minimum spacing requirements that they want to observe between their stations would be in Payson, but they didn't identify a site in Payson. Springfield City's actually owned land for what would be their stop for a number of years, and this site lined up very well for that. So we would, in fact, I would guess, again, try not to speculate, but I would guess that the construction of an interchange would go hand-in-hand with the development of commuter rail south of Provo and a stop at that spot, which it just makes the project that much more expensive. At some point in time, though, there will be a need, and I think, again, this study, it's a few years old now, but very clearly illustrated that unless, and we've talked about this relative to some other projects, unless we have a mechanism to bleed some of the regional traffic off of our Main Street, which this interchange would be, it looks today, like probably the best way to do that, unless we do that, our Main Street will be failing. 2030 to 2040 is what the study suggested. Some of us think it's probably going to be before that. And that, oftentimes, that's what drives things like legislators approving really big sums of money to build a big project like an interchange. You have to go through some pain to get there, and clearly, there, I think, will be a need. So... Can you go next? That all being said, I think also it's important to emphasize now that the study that MAG did in 2012 on this interchange and the alignment that they've drawn for us, it's a conceptual plan. It's not etched in stone. Relative to the conceptual nature of the plan, as part of the same project, MAG's team put a conceptual design together for a 2700 North interchange, which in 2015 was completely overhauled with a subsequent study, completely changed. So while we would hope that the alignment that we were given ultimately resembles what gets built, our experience certainly is the case that that doesn't always happen, which I'll maybe touch on more in a minute, but it's... We know there will be an interchange in that vicinity and the layout that we've talked about. We know that would work. It would meet federal highway requirements, but things do change from time to time. So that being said, mostly just about the interchange, talking about land uses. We've talked about mixed-use zone, I'm sorry, I won't say zone, that's not right, the mixed-use general plan designation. And in short, just looking at it, at least from the perspective of what properties in the city are general plan mixed use, we have a real smorgasbord of land uses that are found in that designation. So I think from a general plan perspective, the Planning Commission could assign commercial 2 zoning to the property and lots of other zoning districts as well, including our 1-9, and we could make a strong case that it's consistent with the general plan, with that So the concept of cities planning for the future and reserving sites for retail uses. Retail uses oftentimes, in fact, I'd say typically, they're among the last that become economically viable to put into play. Usually, you need a certain amount of traffic, a certain number of people driving by and seeing a property, a certain number of rooftops within a certain proximity of a site, and things of that nature before the property becomes viable for commercial uses. So we've done things on different sites around the city. Just go to the next slide. For example, up here, this is 400 North. This is 2550 East, Maple Mountain High School right here, just a screenshot of our zoning map. Back when this property was annexed, we required the annexers to set aside 15 acres that was zoned commercial 2, with the idea that, understanding what 400 North does from a traffic perspective, what 2550 East will do from a traffic perspective, kind of growth in that area, that, you know, we believe that a property there would support at some point in the future retail uses. And we felt like, without zoning it for that, we would perhaps miss an opportunity to keep that property reserved for retail development. Go to the next slide, please. We've talked a little bit about the property that zoned Urban Village, same road, 2550 East, but down on US 6. 12 years ago, the city zoned this for basically commercial uses. If the city hadn't zoned it for commercial uses, it would have developed residentially by now, I believe, just given what else has happened in the area. Next one. For a long time, I called this the Gardner property, owned by the Gardner family. Dave Gardner, one of the sons of the family members, do you know Dave by chance? Talked with Dave many times over the years about his family's property here. This is Volunteer Drive, incidentally, and Main Street. At least for the last 15 years, that's been zoned commercial 2, big vacant field, and the Gardeners would have loved to have had the zoning change to residential over the years. They really had their eye on high-density residential zoning, at least several potential buyers that they've talked to, but again, from, you know, kind of the same perspective that I mentioned with the other sites, the city believing that at some point in the future, there would be a need for commercial development on that end of the city, and therefore zoning was used as the tool to reserve the property for that in the future. So three examples of where commercial zoning has been used to reserve sites for retail So that being said, just a couple of last things to touch on, and I hate to play this up too much, but it is a reality that I think's worth acknowledging. Just neighborhood pushback. That is, when we have a public hearing to talk about, for example, commercial zoning or high-density residential zoning, we went through it last year, you know, with the property down on Volunteer Drive. That's generally what you get unless you're talking about land uses that are similar to the surrounding land uses, and you guys are the ones that get to deal with the real heat when we talk about that, but what I'm saying simply is that neighbors tend to like land uses next to theirs. And kind of last thought, the average lifespan of single-family dwellings in the United States is well over 100 years. I think it's on the order of 130 years, something like that, or I shouldn't say average, the anticipated lifespan is well over 100 years. It's really a function of 30-year mortgages and how that gets replaced one after another over time. Once a residential neighborhood gets approved, typically, they stay residential neighborhoods for a long time. It doesn't always happen that way. We've seen in Spanish Fork, as part of the Canyon Creek project, a number of dwellings removed to make way for that, so at times dwellings are replaced. I'm simply saying it's not very common that it happens that way. So that all being said, we provide that as food for thought for you as the commission to deliberate on the proposed zone change. Again, right now, the property's basically zoned for agricultural uses. The proposal's to change the zoning to R-19, and this one, for me, is tricky. I really don't believe there is a clear black-and-white right or wrong decision to make. I guess I will say this. I think if the commission feels like the land should be set aside for commercial uses, they probably should talk about setting it all aside for commercial uses, based on what Mr. Bowler told us. But that being said, to feel a certain obligation to make a recommendation to the commission relative to the zone change, we've done that once, and we've talked about this again as staff. Our initial recommendation was to approve the zone change to R-19. That hasn't changed, and our reasoning for that is, I'd say, two or three-fold, and I'll put it this way. If, for example, the interchange was in Phase 1, and maybe there was some kind of funding already identified, even just for environmental work, something tangible that was out there that we could look to as some type of certainty that an interchange would be built there, our recommendation would be different, and I mean that. It would be. We would say, "Don't change it to anything but commercial zoning," but that's not the case. If we knew with certainty that the interchange eventually would be built according to the alignment that we're looking at, that would certainly cause us to, you know, do another double-take on our recommendation, but the uncertainties involved from both a design and a timing perspective, coupled with what we know is currently the property owner's desire and a builder's desire, that is heavily influencing, I think, where we're coming from. The last thing that I'll mention, because I think it's important to talk about why this case, and in my mind and some others on staff, is different from, for example, the Gardner property down on South Main, or the properties out on 2550 East, and it has to do, again, with the interchange. In those cases, the bones are there, you know, of the transportation system. Main Street's not going to move. Volunteer Drive's not going to go anywhere. It's only going to become a four-way intersection instead of just the three-way that it is now. Same with US 6 and 2550 East, and different things like that. So in those cases, you know, I would argue very adamantly that they should continue to be reserved for commercial development because we know what's there and what's going to be there in the future. So I just offer that by way of our recommendation, but like I said, and I want to mention, I really appreciate the Planning Commission's care that you've taken in looking at this and having us do the research that we've done. Appreciate that deliberate nature. The issue that you raised is certainly valid, and we appreciate that. So I'll leave it at that unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Just to kind of recap, those that are watching tonight or are present, this, again, was something that was addressed in February's commission meeting. We had some questions and concerns about future development and in relation to the proposed traffic plans and sites that Mr. Anderson has alluded to. This was a public hearing last time, and we did have a few people here that were discussed. So the commission, just the record note that it is open to the public, but we have already had the public hearing in regards to the Newport Village zone change. In regards to that, is there discussions among the commission that they'd like to have more?
I missed the last meeting when this was first brought up. Isn't the fact that there's a church right there next door going to affect what businesses would come in there anyway?
I don't know why.
It just seems like...
We got gas stations next to churches, and we have grocery stores.
...for example.
I don't know, what?
Yeah, I guess that's true.
We've talked about that in the past, because there are some rules that impact what you can do from a retail perspective.
what you can do from a retail perspective in close proximity to a church. But, um, you know, like we're saying, it doesn't take much distance to be able to operate. Commercial use is pretty robust.
So that wasn't a factor really then in the minds of people looking at it?
You know, for the guys at Oldwell, they, they, they resented the fact that there wasn't another five acres potentially that could be, to include in a commercial.
What about all the area on the other side of the freeway that's still so open?
You know, that's a great thing, I think, to talk about, to talk about that as staff and, uh, that was one of the, yeah, I'm trying to push Steve Bowler to, to make sure that he's thinking everything through completely and he immediately acknowledged that, yeah, there's great opportunities out there for, for commercial development when there are thousands of homes on the west side of the freeway and people are traveling by those commercial sites daily. Which, you know, I understand is, is what retailers look for from a traffic perspective. They don't want, they don't want destination traffic, they want traffic that's created as people are forced to drive by their sites daily. That will be the case on the east side of the freeway. It'd be the case today if, you know, interchange were there. It'll be the case on the west side, but not for a really long time.
I can tell you my feelings, um, were similar to what Dave expressed, that if it was more concrete, then I'd have, I mean, I'm the one that really raised the question about commercial and saving, preserving it anyways. And I appreciate the staff, um, going through and look, reevaluating the situation. You know, two thousand thirty-five potentially, twenty years down the road. Still with a kind of a, a thought or a wish with a plan maybe to eliminate, um, the stress of Main Street, but with twenty-seven hundred north, that will reduce some stress. If Benjamin is developed or road, that'll reduce some stress. So who knows that the proposed stresses of today will still be the stresses of two thousand thirty-five potentially. I do think we have a responsibility as planners to, um, forecast down the road. I think we have a responsibility to, you know, preserve if, if need be. But I don't know that we preserve based on a twenty-year projection that could, might or might not happen, I guess, so. I don't know, I, I'm probably the one that set up here all, more than any of you on, uh, also my teammates and said, why do we have to build in every corner of the city? Um, so I've been the one that's been more of a preserve. But I don't know that we hold back potential based on a, something that might or might not happen, so that's my two cents, I don't know. Tracy, what do you think? And I'm just going to call you out.
Thank you. Well, I'll just share what's going through my mind, I guess. I don't have a problem with the housing development going right there as far as it's a good fit with all the other homes in the area. I mean, my only concern was that because of the potential that the off-ramp would be there and it seems like that's many years down the road. I mean, my one thought was just, there's no commercial value to it at the moment. It has no value in that way, so it would just sit in hopes that at some point that would happen, so. And that doesn't seem like a good gamble, I guess, to move that direction. And so I don't, I mean, and like you said, perhaps then once, if the development goes in, it's all just preliminary planning, so it's not like you dot can't make a different plan and work around what changes. I did go drive up and down the freeway just looking, where is there a similar situation where houses would be right off an off-ramp? And I couldn't find one. So I'm, I don't think that it's the best place for houses to be right next to an off-ramp, but that's not for, I, I'm guessing that U dot would figure that out. If we put houses in there and they're not going to do anything for thirty years, then they'll figure that out when they get to that point, so. I don't know, that's just what's going through my mind.
Jenz, what are you thinking?
Oh, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't set it aside based on the, I wouldn't set it aside for commercial based on what we know now.
Bruce?
I'm, I'm on the same page. I, the only question I guess I have is, is the density the right density? Should it be more dense? But again, that's, you're, 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 it's, it's the same coin basically of, of, you know,
So we're going similar, we're going similar to the density on the south side, but different from the density on the north side.
Pretty similar, but who's about, for pretty much.
Can we pull up the zoning map and?
So was the plat submitted with a portion carved out for commercial stuff? It was just all houses, right?
Exactly, yes.
How many houses?
Forty-one, I believe.
Forty-one? So the Thomas's house will be absorbed in the subdivision, huh? Or move.
And just along Center Street right there, then that's a housing development, then what, is there more housing developments along Center Street before you get to Main Street?
There are a few, a few that are, are contemporary, that have been built in the last ten years or so. This one right here, this is in our construction right now. I guess those don't, don't front on to Center Street. But there's not much, not much land that's been vacant, this is a, a church now.
You actually have three churches real close there, don't you?
Yeah.
We do.
Welcome to Utah.
So in, in, you know, part of my perspective relative to the mixed use, that's all designated mixed use, you see. Got a really diverse...
And in this situation, it's more a block of this, a block of that, a block of that.
It is.
It's the definition.
What about the city property?
We don't have a single real mixed use project in that area.
Is the city property a potential, um, commercial property?
That's music to my ears. As the economic development guy, yeah. You know somebody that might be interested, so we, we can always talk.
Seven-Eleven, Seven-Eleven might want to go there, you've got all the school kids.
I don't, we don't know what the plan for the, the land that we own here is necessarily in the future. And incidentally, that's, that's SFCN, so all of that is city-owned. Uh, we know there's room to expand the court building out into here and room to expand the, the police department building here and, you know, to, to develop the site with the commiserate parking that you'd need and so, so forth with that. But over here, um, it's not going to be a rec center anytime.
You're going to take the little, uh, RC, RC car, make it a full NASCAR track there or something?
Everything fills in, the city's got the only vacant spot and you've got the best commercial real estate in the city.
So I guess I...
Solve all the financial problems in the city.
I don't know that we have an answer though, in terms of is this the right zoning? You know, is it, is it dense enough for what the future is? Your recommendations, your thoughts, Mr. Anderson?
Um, I'm still smarting from the last time that I stood up here and recommended that you zone a property in this general vicinity for something a little bit more dense, so, uh, I'm a big fan of R one nine zoning.
Gun shy, are you?
Yeah.
I don't want more dense.
Didn't used to be that way, maybe age has taken its toll.
The developer's happy with this plan right here.
Let's discuss the zone before we discuss the plat. Because if we don't pass the zone, then the plat's not relevant. Are there more?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion if that's, you guys? So, um, the motion, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the Newport Village Zone Change from the rural residential to R one six as indicated, as requested.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fallon.
I'll second it. Is it R one six or R one nine, did you say?
You have it on, it's on the agenda as R one six, so that's why I was just reading.
It's our mistake.
R one nine.
I'll second it as R one nine.
Okay, make the, uh, record note that it is R one nine, R one nine by Commissioner Fallon. Fallon and a second by Commissioner Nelson. And we'll do a roll call vote with, starting with Commissioner Fallon.
Aye.
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 So the next item on the agenda tonight is the, um, preliminary plat for the same applicant, and so the preliminary plat is indicated.
Let's just stay on that for a second, if you don't mind.
As such.
I just want to touch on a couple of things here, um, that we've already talked a little bit about. So back to the potential that something's going to happen here. And even if an interchange isn't here, uh, Center Street's a big road. And, uh, we've made sure that the width of Center Street would stay consistent through this property. That's why you see this gap.
It's one of the questions I have.
Between the rear lot lines and where the current property line is. All of this land would be set aside so that, you know, really regardless of what happens here from a transportation perspective, we would never expect that any of these properties would be impacted with that.
It'd be a wall.
That's what we would expect, at least, yes. Yeah, and, and we do have planned, and, and there are some other factors as well. Right now, there's an active railroad track right here. A spur, it gets used once or twice a week. But it's there.
That much?
Hence, it's my understanding that it's, I think it's just the pallet factory that takes deliveries via that line.
Low speeds, I assume.
Well, a dead end's right here.
Yeah. In fact, I don't know if they actually use this part that often, but I know that gets...
They, they come in from here to switch and go down there.
So, um...
They forward and then break down.
Then relative to the trail, if you want to go back to the plat image, we can talk about that.
What's your thought about a connection to potential expansion?
I, prior to the church building there, I would have said yes, probably need to do that, but...
You're right, I was thinking, I was thinking the church is more this way. My bad, yep, you're right.
So.
Wouldn't be the only place in the community that had a
Dead end?
A exit right into the church parking lot.
So the, the land then on the north side, that gets deeded to the city and then it sits weed-infested for thirty years?
The church dedicated land to us for a trail and we've got a trail over here. So in fact, with this development, uh, that only leaves a property that's owned by the Nebo School District over on the south side of First South to get us down to where we could tie into our trail that comes up through the Spanish Fields Development, before it ties into the River Trail. So we're close now to having a loop, you know, from the River Trail all the way back around to Center Street here. That's, that's one plus, I guess, as well of, of this development.
Would build the masonry wall there as well as that trail for that section, so. Then you're really up against that railroad, so it's a little bit improved, but weeds beyond that.
I know, I don't see, um, a lot of times our, um, um, plats are given to us in phases, is this all one phase?
I'll let the applicants talk about that, I, I assume it is, I'm not sure what their plan exactly is.
How are you?
Good, hi, Brian Prince with Ivory Development, nine seventy Eastwood, Oak Lane, Celtic City. This would be a two-phase project, so we'd start, essentially if you cut it in half, south to north, um, down that, down that island, um, that would be phase one and then we move north to phase two.
Can you discuss the entrance, the roads in relation to the phases, when those will be done in relation to the phases, please?
Uh, yeah, sorry, can I borrow your? So, uh, in phase one, it would essentially cut that down, uh, down the middle. This road and this road would be improved in phase one. And, uh, then, uh, this as well, actually, and then the, the remainder inside the property would be phase two. Dave was right when he said that, uh, we do plan to put a masonry wall around, uh, the, the subdivision. We made that decision well in advance, knowing that, uh, U dot may make a decision twenty years from now and, and residents are going to, are, are smart enough to look into that and be concerned about potential traffic, you know, years down the road. And so that would, will deed, you know, the big section on the north end to the city. Put a wall up and this will be, you know, pretty enclosed. We, we truthfully anticipate, this, this, the design here mirrors a, an active adult project we did in Orem City several years ago, uh, called Da Vinci Place and it was a very successful project. This won't be in any way a deed-restricted community, but I, I think we look at it as an age-targeted, um, active adult location. Um, and because of its location and, and the design and providing, uh, some privacy. But, yeah, that's a... Any other questions I can answer?
I guess, um, no, I'm, I'm good, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Thanks. Are you okay with the, that road design in relation to the phases and stuff?
Yes, and, and from a, a standpoint of street alignments, major, well, a larger facility in a U dot road on the south, certainly the same there. This nine twenty west as well as a, a more major facility to connect those two roads. So, so splitting that with access in the middle is ideal from a access spacing standpoint as well as lining up across the street, so. From an access and road standpoint, I think it's as good as we can get.
Anybody on the commission have any questions?
The, can, there were four conditions outlined in the recommendation from staff, has a, a, any of those changed since our last? Since the report was written?
No.
Well, if there's no more discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion.
Actually, I do have one other, sorry. It does say here, staff recommends that the proposed zone change and plat be approved subject to the following conditions. We didn't put any conditions on the zone change. It's probably fine that we didn't.
Right.
Because we'll put them on here, just wanted to make sure that's okay. I, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Newport Village, uh, project, uh, subject to the four conditions outlined in the staff report.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Fallon.
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Commissioner Tagg, and we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Fallon.
Aye.
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 And the next item on our agenda for the night is the Title Fifteen Amendments. And we'll hear from staff on that.
Uh, I really want to start with a thank you, I really appreciated the meeting that we had last week. I feel like the direction that I got that night was very, very useful. Felt like that was a very productive time. And in short, what I've done this past week has really just been a, a follow-up to that by way of trying to incorporate the direction that we got into the draft language that we had prepared that night in hopes of getting things to a point this evening to where you feel comfortable, at least considering action on the idea of creating a new zoning district. And that being the case, there were a couple of things that I had been thinking about that I, I thought would be issues that would need to be worked through. Uh, at least potentially would need to be worked through with the adoption of a new zoning district. And as I got into more of the details this past week, it became more apparent that there are some other things that I think we need to consider. So if you'll indulge me, I'm going to take maybe five minutes just going through some of those collateral issues.
Five minutes?
Maybe six minutes. Then I'd like to just maybe go over the specifics on the changes that I made since we last talked. Then I'd like to just maybe go over the specifics on the changes that I made since we last talked, and you can go from there. So that being said, our reasoning for wanting to create a new higher density residential zoning district that hasn't changed, I think, for months and months and months, so we're still operating with basically the idea that there's a need in the community and that we would like that need to be met with some type of a housing development that is going to appreciate for the community over time. It's going to gain value. It's going to be an asset and not a liability, so still working with that, that fundamental premise. Next for me, Corey. So, these are some things that I've had on a few presentations that we've, we've seen in the past. We've just kind of glossed over these issues, but back to things that I've been thinking about. So tonight I'll talk a little bit about separate design standards, but then also how we integrate the R four zone into Title fifteen with the idea that there's probably a need to make some adjustments then to the R three zone and the infill overlay. So without further ado, we'll dive into that. We've already talked quite a bit about this, so even let's skip that, Corey. So, to talk about infill overlay, R three, sorry, not even R three yet, but master plan developments and the potential R four zone. If, for example, the R four zone were adopted, we would have three zoning mechanisms by which the city could approve a residential development with something other than single-family homes in it. Right now, the two mechanisms that we have are the infill overlay and a master plan development. So for example, the infill overlay, that rather than, for example, infill overlay really was intended to be used on an isolated basis, really for the redevelopment of a property. And we've kind of stretched that because our code didn't have a way to deal with some other projects to, to include some other uses as well, their implementations. But originally, the infill overlay, again, it was intended, you know, like the name suggests, for small little pieces where there was a gap or something that you wanted to see redeveloped. So one of the things I'm going to suggest is that with changes that we make here soon, we take the infill overlay back to that original intent of serving small projects. So for example, right now, we don't have a maximum size for an infill overlay. Without being completely arbitrary, the language that passed out would change that so that we would have a maximum size. Three and three quarters of an acre, which basically is one city block. I think it's a little bit far-fetched to think somebody might acquire all of the properties in a city.
Typical city block, Utah city block.
Well, thank you, that's worth mentioning. One of the originally platted city blocks where you're basically four hundred feet by four hundred feet.
Here in Spanish Fork.
Here in Spanish Fork. Yep, that's where I got the three point seven five acres. Again, with the idea that that tool is to be used on a limited scale. You know, properties of a certain size and really in just a certain area of the city. With the idea as well that there's a place for that, there's a need for the infill overlay. It doesn't just exist, you know, on a whim, but it, it's, it's a useful tool. Now, master plan developments, another mechanism by way, somebody could have multifamily units included in a project. Tonight we drove by, for example, the Maple Mountain Development, where you've got a mixture of single-family homes north of Sierra Bonita, and then on the other side, you have townhomes. In the past, this has been a way for the city to, to allow for, you know, that distinct land use on a greenfield development or, you know, on land that hasn't previously been developed to happen. And with, with one catch, right now, that tool still works. The limiting factor that we have with master plan developments today is that the, the most dense project that you can do is five point three seven units per acre. That's what our zoning code allows for, so even if a property is zoned R three, which today is, is the highest density zone that we have in the city, your ceiling for density is that number, five units to the acre. Which frankly, for the types of projects that often we see, oftentimes we see, and we'll talk about one here in just a minute, your typical townhome project are usually in the eight, nine, or ten unit per acre range. And because I feel like there should be a mechanism to approve a townhome project of eight units to the acre, let's just say. Again, we'll talk about a specific case here in a minute. I think there's a need to adjust the density that's allowed for a master plan development in the R three zone, which right now, it matches what's allowed in the R one six zone. They both top out at five point three seven units per acre. I'm suggesting that we change that to eight units per acre.
Would you disconnect it from the zoning, then?
I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't, which I, I would, in fact, let's just look at that really quick and get a, get a sense for what it looks like. On the last page of the memo that I passed out, you can see some changes that we're suggesting to the zoning chart there. And probably the biggest one is adding the R four zone. But then another one is just that change. Right now, it's five point three seven, and I'm suggesting that be bumped up to R one eight. Incidentally, it's five point three seven because the lot size, six thousand square feet, is the same for the R three zone. And the R one six zone, five point three seven is a factor of that. It's if you did a project with six thousand square foot lots, accounting for roads and things, you'd likely end up with something in that five point three seven range, so that's, that's kind of the history behind that, but again, with the idea that there, there's a need for a zoning tool that allows the city to at least consider a project of a little bit higher density than five units to the acre, I think this is a change that makes sense. It, it helps foit, excuse me, it helps, let's say, fill a void. It helps fill a void that we would otherwise have between the infill overlay and the R four zone, which I think the R four zone really is intended to, to serve an entirely different animal from a development perspective. And I think we're well suited to, to keep the R four zones' expectations very distinct from kind of the master plan development approach where it's more of a medium density kind of a thing than a high density type of a thing. And then, we'll talk more about this in a minute, but key features of the language for the R four zone, minimum project size of about twelve acres. I shouldn't say about, but right now it is twelve acres. Maximum density of eighteen units per the, per acre. Really with the idea that it's promoting a project of maybe two hundred units in size because we understand that that, that's kind of the industry standard. To see the types of amenities that we expect to see, that's what, from a scale perspective, a development would need to contain. So, three distinct tools, all to allow for multifamily developments to be approved. I don't know that I really need to go through the next slides, but just kind of put together some examples of, I'm going to skip that one. I've already kind of talked about this, you know, just what makes those three tools a little bit distinct. We can go through that more thoroughly if you want, or skip it. I don't know why PowerPoint does this to some of my images sometimes, but just to talk about this, I mentioned, we'd talk about a specific example. Got some people here tonight I know that are concerned about. In fact, can you go back to the zoning map for me? Everybody picture where Somerset Village is? So, east of Somerset Village, there's this property here. And I'm not here tonight to be an advocate for or against really the, the concept that we'll talk about, but I do want to get your thoughts. And if this is something that you want to pursue, then at least that change to the master plan development density does become pretty important. Right now, this property is zoned R one six. And with that, the city could approve a master plan development. But the, the ceiling on the density would be just over five units per acre, like I mentioned. That might be a good thing. And that's something we'd like to get some of your thoughts on tonight. Incidentally, Somerset Village altogether is in that five and a half or so, you know, per acre range. Although if you look at different parts of the project, for example, what they've done on the, on the west end, you know, clearly in certain areas, they're, they're closer to ten units per acre than they are five. And the applicants here, they propose this townhome project, eight units per acre. As I understand it, the idea is that from a design perspective, it would be similar to what you have with Somerset Village. Right in between Canyon Road and US Highway six. And I will say that in my opinion, for those reasons and given what is next door, we're Somerset Village, which is a little bit higher density residential development, this is certainly not a far-fetched idea by any means. The idea that you would put a little bit higher density residential use there. It's pretty easy for me to get my head around. But I think this is good to illustrate, both so the applicant can get some feedback as well as to talk about the master plan development program and the idea of bumping up the density without changing the density in the R three zone like I just mentioned. We would not have a mechanism to consider this at this density for approval. The ceiling would be five and a half units per acre because the property's not big enough to qualify for R four zoning. So there's, again, there's kind of that void unless we make an adjustment to that zoning standard. So, I don't know if you want to chat more about this now. Basically, that's what I had to mention in terms of integrating what we've talked about with the R four language into the code to try to, try to draw the lines between infill overlay, master plan development, and R four a little bit more distinctly. And I think the language that you have in that memorandum does that. But you guys can tell me if you think that's a good idea or not, so.
How many acres does that leave? A little vacant piece going on.
That's a great question. UDOT owns that.
Oh, okay. So I was just wondering if.
UDOT's already realigned to R one six. Someday, when they purchase properties, they will line that up, likely change signal and change this access.
This represents basically what's left.
R three.
This is, would be UDOT's.
So just to clarify, Mr. Anderson, so just as an example, I guess, with this particular project, without the amendment to this Title fifteen change for the R three, this particular project, we would have to use the overlay process?
We'd have to use the infill overlay, which we could do, unless you set a size limitation on it, like I've suggested, is a good idea. So if you don't change the, the maximum project size to four acres or so for the infill overlay, then we could use this as a, we could use that as a tool for this, and because this is designated, I believe, medium density on the general plan, you could approve it for eight units to the acre using that as a tool. So you're right, that's another option, certainly. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Sorry.
A little bit, but
So.
But the, your proposal here does not include the infill overlay change that you had on your PowerPoint. So I guess what I'm looking at is, you have put.
It's just saying maximum project size is.
That's, that's the change. That's the only change.
On which one?
So it's just making it a certain amount of size of land that you're seeing then counter that, then we create the R, change the R three for a smaller piece of land to have more units.
Exactly. Well said. Yep, that's kind of getting back to the original intent. We've stretched it, I don't think it's been a terrible thing, but it really hasn't been consistent with what.
What other places in the city do we have designated R three, though?
We don't have a lot, so for this, most, in fact, there's really not any developable land that zoned R three. So for example, for this project that we're, we're looking at here, the applicants would apply for a zone change to R three. That'd be part of the, part of the.
So we would still have a lot of ability to manage that in our city as far as where that kind of density would be put.
Yes, and that's a great thing to talk about, like I've said quite a few times with the infill overlay, because that's a zoning mechanism. City Council has all the discretion in the world as to whether to approve something or not, or to suggest changes, require changes, that type of a thing. It's much like that with the master plan development as well.
So would the motion on this be, I guess typically when we make changes, we kind of like, it'll say, you know, we approved the changes outlined, you know, one through ten. Where this is not really one through ten, it's in, and it's in a, it's proper format. Do we make a motion that, as written? You know, as written per March second, two thousand sixteen, or I guess, how do we indicate that?
Or with the following changes, which is kind of what I, I'm guessing would happen in some respects at least.
And we're making this recommendation to city councils to approve the change.
If you wanted to go that route tonight, I think that's how the, the verbiage of a recommendation likely would be, yes. You know, as, as written on the memorandum dated March two, you know, maybe with the following changes.
I've just, I've seen where the changes were summarized, you know, like following changes and just want to make sure that we were presenting it correctly. Or as indicated in red, or.
And incidentally, I had wanted to maybe at least work through this, we could go pretty quickly just to talk about the specific changes. Do you have any thoughts on this that you want to talk about now? Frankly, I think if, if you feel like this conceptually is a bad idea, the applicants would like to hear that. If you think it's worth pursuing, I think they'd like to hear that as well. Again, you know, from my perspective, I think it's fairly easy to support the idea that you do a little bit higher density there.
What else are you going to put there, really?
Seven eleven, didn't you say?
Where is it going to go?
Dave, on the, on the definitions, the word townhome, have you reviewed that with John Little? From a building code perspective?
Nope.
There, there are some specific nuances in the residential code.
Great thought.
Regarding townhomes, and I, it's been so long since I've dealt with it, I don't remember what they are, I just know that. I also know that there's some legislation that has been proposed this year to deal with that as well, so. And I'm not familiar enough with it to give you the specifics, but just suggest that you review that.
You can tell in my simplified way what me and the city attorney were trying to do by way of distinguishing between a townhome and the stacked flats.
Yeah, yeah.
That's really, but that's a great suggestion. I'll go with John.
And then the other comment I was going to make is, and I don't know how this, this comment effect impacts this comment, but my first reaction to the infill overlay maximum size was that it was still too big to really fit the intent. I mean, when you're talking about an entire city block, that's, that's not infill at that point, in my opinion. And I think, I think half a block, maybe, half that size.
That's not entirely arbitrary, I think. I think there's some, some basis for that.
Yeah. So that would be my suggestion.
Well, is there a, you know, what we're talking about under the infill overlay, we're talking about three point seven five acres based on the average block. I like what you're saying, that I think it needs to be a little bit more restricted to areas of a block that we feel that can be enhanced or improved without doing the whole block. You know, you have a couple of recent situations, even the one here by the park, where we might not have wanted to change the whole, the whole block on the, what would be the east side of the block for that business type area, but maybe the one corner of that block made sense, so. I would, I would almost dare say that it needs to be smaller.
Than even half a block?
No.
That, that's, I don't know.
Or a half a block, but I'm, I refer into smaller than the designation now of three point seven five acres.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
So the theoretically, if you have one small portion of the block that wants to use the infill overlay, if the others come on board, you have your full acreage and it works, is that right?
Again, this is maximum size we're talking about here, though. Again, this is maximum size we're talking about here, though. So, you know, if you have one piece of property that's the minimum of eight thousand square feet, they can use the infill overlay up to, that's the.
Three point seven five.
Or, or whatever we decide, but yeah.
So the, if I live in a city block, I'm thinking you have a little more control over what happens in your backyard. See what I'm saying?
I do.
I thought that was the purpose of the.
Yeah, and typically we're talking about minimums, not maximums, right, when we talk about project size. I support the smaller minimum, though, to try to encourage people to do something with maybe a property that needs to be redeveloped. I'm not sure that that eight thousand square feet is the, the magic number, but yeah, for example, in the R three zone, to do a duplex today, you have to get the infill overlay approved. And I think eight thousand square feet probably is a big enough lot to build a duplex on if somebody wanted. So I might look at it more from that perspective, just by way of what reasonably could you do on something that small.
Big as that property on the north side of Center Street that was done by Mark Dowen four or five years ago. Do we know how big that, that's a duplex, right?
Right over here?
Yeah.
That one?
It was big when we approved it because he sold some of it. But it's, just thinking about the width.
I'm just, just using that as an example, huh?
Just directly across from right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of kitty corner.
Just a little.
Right here?
Yep.
Yep.
So it was a little bit bigger when we approved it. But he sold the back part off, but he checked with this, so he maintained a minimum when he sold the back. I guess that's. You can just measure it too, Corey, real quick if you want.
Sometimes our JIS tends to have.
Only during public meetings.
A lot of information.
Yeah, that's a good example of a nine thousand or so square foot project.
I see what you're saying.
I think eight thousand's the right number.
So is eight thousand, just like.
As what? Max?
Normal plot, I mean, for a house, like, is that kind of the size that you're looking at?
Are you, are you requesting that we go by minimums and not maximums?
Right now, both.
I know both, but I'm, do we?
Right now, we don't have a maximum. So the only suggestion I'm making is that we employ a maximum to try to get back to the original.
The intent, yeah.
I think integrity is a good word to use. Since we're kind of on a roll, do you want to just touch on a few of the other things and we can go from there? We already talked about the two, the changes to definitions. That's probably among the least essential of anything we're, we're talking about here. But generally, I don't like to have a permitted use listed in a place that we don't find it, so we try to do that. We've talked about, so now I'm onto the second page down. Development standards for the R four district, we talked about density. Eighteen units per acre, one change that I did make, though, is adding the additional language, which is a copy from what we already have in the code elsewhere, just to make it clear that we're talking about buildable land when it comes to calculating what density is allowed. So if somebody has a ten acre site, half of it, or rather, half of it is wetlands that you can't build on, they're not getting eighteen times ten, they're getting eighteen times five to figure out what density is allowed.
Are, are roads included in that or not included?
They, if they own it, so if it's a road that they would build for the development, that's included. So we, it's gross density from that perspective or certain area, not that.
Is it necessary under, you know, lands, churches, schools, et cetera? To, you used to say that as an example versus, so it doesn't come across as limited to those or? Because when I read that, I think you're, I guess I'm looking at that as you're using those as examples. But you could probably make an argument that it's only those versus an example of those.
And that's how I'd read it today, is that it is only those things. So you're saying we should maybe give ourselves some kind of a caveat there with the language?
That's.
Maybe similar, those uses and similar things.
Yes.
Well, you say sites for other non-residential.
Go ahead.
I mean, it says sites for other non-residential uses. And that kind of encompasses everything.
Well, if, if, if you guys feel it covers it, I would just, you made a, the comment that, you know.
Thought was too limiting, kind of.
Yeah, it was just non-buildable, I mean, buildable areas, right? Or what is the term you used?
This would address buildable land and, you know, maybe land that ends up being used for some purpose that's not tied to the residential project, so both of those. Which usually that's a church or a school, we're dealing with that.
I think it, it's okay then if you're reading it that way.
Parking then, I think that's just directly from what we talked about last week. You turn it over to that and you felt comfortable with it. The unit sizes, again, just directly taken from the conversation that we had last week with both a minimum unit size based on number of bedrooms and the average. Heights, same, we're talking about forty-five feet. I will say this, that the, the thirty percent number and how we've, we've spelled that out with this language. I'm not completely comfortable with the language, the concept. I, I think I understand, which is just that, that a third of a building's roofline would be
fluctuate.
Literal elevation, like distance above seat level from the remaining part of the roofline. Is that how you guys understand?
Yeah.
What we talked about?
Does, you know, a one foot shift, does that count? I mean, is that, is that enough, I guess, is what I'm suggesting? Do we need, do we want to have more distinct shift in roofline? Exactly. I mean, the way it's written, the way it's written out, you know, at one foot shift.
Can you go down, Corey, back to?
Which is not hard to do.
Yeah.
Let me, let me just run a couple of what ifs by either two.
Oh, which direction?
Down, down to photographs, so down.
Past this, we'll come back.
Way down. So for example, this roofline here, in your mind, would that qualify? Where you've got, you basically have a hip on each end here and then you have that straight across. There's this kind of variation here that I think visually breaks it up. But again, up above, it's basically that carried all the way across.
Yeah, I mean, you, you've got two different elements we're dealing with. You've got a ridge line and an eve line, right?
So maybe we need a designation.
Should we write that distinction in here?
I think so. And to me, I saw it as the ridge line being the differentiator, not the eve line. The eve line's going to get that because we've designated the, the visual relief through balconies, through all that. I think that'll be taken care of along that, but I think we need to, I think the ridge line is the delineator for, that I'm looking for.
Ridge lines that we're looking at, though, it's pretty much one, unless we're somehow accounting for that, that gable on the end, which seems to be pretty common. It's one line. Can you maybe go down?
Get out a couple more, there's other.
So like this here, you've got, that's a break, I guess.
Yep. And there, there's your one foot break, right?
So mission accomplished, right?
That does look a lot better than the other one.
Difficult to cover all that stuff.
So like this one here we looked at, this also has just kind of the, the one, the one hip on the top that runs to vault me.
Again, I go back to Hillsborough. I mean, that's, to me, that's the, that's the image that I would like to see. Yeah, it's hard to beat, right?
Should we write in a certain number of feet then? And use the word ridge line?
I think for sure the ridge line, I'm, I'm struggling with the number of feet. I, I think let's just call it ridge line, that's what I'm comfortable.
The off, the offset number of feet you refer to, like one foot, two foot?
You know, a minimum offset of two feet, good. It's not out of the ordinary, I guess, but I think.
So to me, are you proposing that we have offset, an offset of two foot?
No, I don't think I want to control.
So you're just changing roofline to ridge line?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about exactly how that would read, but yeah. We'll, we'll make sure the standards are effective, ridge line of the roof or something like that.
So the minimum twelve acres, just like with the, you have buildable space for the number of units you can put. Can you have twelve acres with only half of the twelve being used for the buildings and the other half for something else? So, so if you do want to have open space, you can, is that what you're saying?
Onto the next one, maybe. So for example, if you had a twelve acre development with what we talked about last time, which is a thirty percent open space requirement, thirty percent of twelve is three point six acres, so you'd have three point six acres that would be open. And a lot of times that's, obviously some of that's integrated. Yeah, and a lot of planners would suggest consolidate those buildings as much as you can into one part to open up another area. Yeah. If, if wetlands could be a part of the project, you just aren't going to get credit for purposes of density with it, yeah. Um, so again, thirty percent was the next change. I brought a couple of standards from our master plan development over into the R four. For example, our maximum block length of six hundred feet. I feel pretty strongly about that, so that's, that's where that came from. And then development agreements, just having that mechanism in place to make sure that what gets approved gets built, regardless of whether the project gets sold to another owner, regardless of whether the project, you know, the zoning would have been changed to R four. We will make people contract to build what they present. And city attorney feels very comfortable with that approach, so. Those changes there, infill overlay, again, the only change was, was maximum project size. Something, just literally half a block. We could do that mathematically, it's going to be one point eight something.
Point eight seven five.
Yep. So we can write that in.
Are you going backwards, one point eight seven five for the?
I'm talking there about.
That's in the infill overlay.
I didn't know we had decided on that, so.
All the other changes are reflected, I take that back. Again, making the landscaping requirement thirty percent for the infill overlay zone as well. That's on the next to the last page. Then the chart that we already talked a little bit about. Hopefully no surprises there. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what we have. Going hand in glove, which I had really hoped to have this more polished and just more really heft to it. But I'll say this, I, I'm certainly committed to the idea that we need this tool for the high density zone. And I really like the idea of developing it for the infill overlay and master plan development options as well. So I'm not suggesting this is a finished product by any means. As we put this together, we realize what we lack from an imagery standpoint. So we're working on getting more photographs and more sketches and things like that put together that, you know, we think more accurately touch on the points that need to be emphasized. But this is the type of document that we would expect to have somehow recognized by the city as the advice that people get in terms of what would and would not be approved in terms of a, an apartment development.
I, I hate to go backwards, I'm sorry. Going back to this document here, can you remind me the discussion we had of reducing the landscaping from thirty-five to thirty?
We have some numbers that we've collected from other cities relative to higher density.
We went through those.
And you, you could make a case that it should be thirty-five percent, you could make a case that it should be twenty percent as well. So going to thirty percent.
Hit the middle.
Seemed like a very reasonable standard.
I remember that discussion now. I was just trying to refresh myself on that discussion, so. Thank you.
One question that this design serves in this, I like what's, what you're doing here. Flat roofs, do we really, do we address that in our language?
Well, not, we, we try to say not flat roofs.
Not flat roofs.
That's, that's, the verbiage here is taken directly from what we just talked about.
And should we refer to it as, refer to it as a pitch?
I'm just, well, yeah, I'm seeing this here, you know, in our design guidelines as, you know, but, but nothing that says, no, we don't want flat roofs.
That's a great catch.
You know.
Well.
But do we not want flat roofs? There may be places that we want flat roofs.
Are you going to have a flat roof with the, with the change in elevation now?
That's what, yeah, no, you wouldn't, no. You would with the eve potentially, you know, if you want, you know, straight eve, straight parapet, I guess that's the correct term.
We wouldn't have a concern with that look. In the right setting.
I wouldn't, no.
That's a good point.
I guess let's discuss why we would have flat roof in there from a design perspective or from a, I mean, what's our concerns? Maybe that'll help us identify whether we should or shouldn't have it in there.
I think the idea of requiring the variation in the elevation on the roof simply is to force somebody to make something that's more visually interesting.
I get that, but how about flat, though? Is it a, is it a look or is it a functionality?
Yeah, it's a different style.
It's completely inapplicable. The motive doesn't have any water when you're talking about a flat roof. What about maybe just typically do stuff like, basically, however the city may consider, you know, an alternative proposal. Some kind of, so if somebody proposes something like this, it could at least be entertaining.
With the variation in parapet height, is that part of it? I think that helps, just.
Yeah, that's what you'd have, right? So then, if we're, if we're talking parapet, then we'd want to reference flat roof. We'd want to use that phrase, right?
Low slope is really the correct. Come on, we live in Utah, we can't have a flat roof here, anyway, sorry. I've heard that way too many times.
For the sake of looking silly here, I'm not, I'm going to challenge my designer here. So, I mean, Bruce, you do this for a living and, but we talked about a ridge line a minute ago. But I'm looking at this design standards and I'm not so sure that the, what'd you call it, the eve?
Eve.
Eve line? The eve line is not maybe the right way to go and, I mean.
What do you mean?
I, I just don't mind this variation here. And I know that we discussed this variation, but I don't know that I, so I think this is what we were looking for, right?
This goes into different.
I, I think it's a combination to me. You know, I think.
So can we write it as kind of a, an either or versus be rigid and say this is how it has to be? Because I, I can see the variation here as being appealing to the eye and what we're looking at cosmetically. But I also could say that if this is flat, then this needs to alter.
Maybe, I mean, the, the thing that's interesting about that design is because of the, of the lower slope of the roof line.
It becomes less significant.
Less significant, so maybe it's a, once you get over a four and twelve pitch, then you need to provide that change in ridge line. I, I don't know if that's, I'm, I'm, four and twelve, I'm just pulling out of the air, so. But is there a magic number where, where architecturally, particularly if you're over three stories, you know, if you're at three stories, like this building is?
Three stories, forty-five foot max height.
Right. Right.
How much are you going to have?
So maybe is it saying that?
Would you have anything above a four twelve, ever?
Probably not.
So I, I almost think that you kind of present it as, and I'm not as good at the language, leave it up to staff to do that kind of thing, but saying that, you know, it's our desire to have a variation. And the ridge line can have this variation or the, or the eve, but it just, I don't know, I don't know. I guess I'm mixed here, I just don't feel like it can be so, it can't be rigid.
I'm still a fan of having the ridge line as an element of it.
It's hard to illustrate, I don't know if the other commissioners are, you guys following what we're discussing? On the very last page here? So this illustration here, we're discussing of this eve line having a variation.
Where one of those batteries pops out, it becomes an element, it pops a fire because it has to go.
It's tough to give some.
That's kind of like that project norm, Dave, right?
Little phrase that covers all this, what you're looking for, you know, it's a, I almost wonder if a builder could say, look, it wouldn't, it wouldn't really be doable or make sense to do anything less than, for example, you're going to have some variation, but.
There is some constructability practical things that in terms of getting in underneath that eve and flashing it and putting up the siding and all those kinds of things, so yeah, there's a real constructability aspect to it that, that a builder would be concerned with, so.
And I just think, I mean, we need to be, we want them to know our expectations, but I feel like we need to be careful not to limit their designing. I mean, I want them to feel like they can be creative and come up with different designs that maybe we didn't even think of. I just think they need to know that we're, as, you know, the city council, whoever would approve it, would be looking for unique designs, we're not just looking for a flat square building. But who says that they couldn't come up with a cool design that? So I think we should be careful.
They don't want to go through too many design explanations.
We tell them we want something like this, that's what they'll do.
But I think it's good to use a word like ridge line and not just roof line because that is more, oh, they're paying attention to that detail. When we say roof line, it's not giving them a specific detail.
Can I just say thirty percent variation depicted by ridge line or eve line?
Is the foot requirement, is that sufficient? Say, long continuous ridge line of greater than fifty feet?
That's what I was just looking at, too.
Maybe fifty feet's not the magic number, maybe versus a percentage.
I mean, I think we have to designate between ridge line and eve line for sure. But I think you're right, I think it's almost, it's almost a duplication to require, you know, anything longer than fifty feet and thirty percent. I, I think I'd almost stick with long continuous ridge line and eve lines, greater than fifty feet shall not be permitted, period. You know. Don't know that the thirty percent needs to be doing, needs to be there.
Say that one more time, see if you can say the same thing twice.
Yeah. So again, saying that, that designating ridge line and eve line variations, I think is still a good thing. And that, that the fifty foot designation will give us the variation that we would, that I'm looking for at least. And that the thirty percent variation listed there is a duplication of the, of intent. So I said it a little differently there, but.
But I, but I'm following you, I like that, I don't know. Mr. Anderson, you're taking notes, does we have to say it for a third time? He might, he might struggle the third time.
I might have missed forty second time. The first time it was just. Long contiguous ridge lines and eve lines of longer than fifty feet will not be permitted.
I think that's all you have to say, yeah.
And then they'll know we want to provide.
That's, yeah, that's going to force somebody, a lot of the bad stuff that we've seen, you couldn't do. You'd have to change, so, yeah.
And that, and sometimes that can be adjusted just by a shift in the building. That, so that the actual height changes the same, but that shift in the building just breaks up that length, excuse me, so.
So I challenged my architect and, not in a bad way, hopefully.
Everything else. I did, I like that, again, like I said, that thirty percent for me. I wouldn't be sure how to measure it, so I, I like that better.
That's good.
So, there they are, a way to change this.
So we have two changes on this. Does anybody have further concerns or questions thirty percent on this? Let's kind of go step by step here, okay, and then on the design standards. The design standards are not a separate item on, but is it, do we add that to here on the agenda? Are we just reviewing it?
You're still working on this?
Yes.
So this is just, this is for our review, but we're not taking action on it.
But I would say this, for example, if the council adopts this zone in two weeks, we will start to give people that kind of thing.
Right.
As advice, if nothing else.
So I think what, so I'll try to make a motion if that's okay, based on my understanding, and Jason, correct me in this process, so. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the, the changes or the additional language in the definitions. The language outlined in, for the R four residential district, because that's a brand new zone, correct? So that whole, in its entirety, with the changes to
infill overlay.
The ridge, the roof line to ridge line and eve line, directing staff to evaluate low slope roofs with parapet variations as a part of that language. And so I think that's it for the residential, R four residential district. And then recommend approval of the changes to the infill overlay zone with the maximum project size at one point eight seven five acres. And the change to the landscaping, is that right? Is table one, is that, does table one fall under the infill overlay zone language?
Or you could just make.
Table one is a separate part of the code.
You can just make a, all of it.
So, so with the changes to table one as outlined and the changes to the thirty percent maximum, or minimum, excuse me, landscaping. Does that cover it?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fallon, a second by Commissioner Tagg, roll call vote with Commissioner, starting with Commissioner Fallon.
Aye.
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 Okay, as far as we were, just a record note that we were presented from staff the design standards. I would ask the members of the commission to kind of read this a little bit more in detail and get our recommendations for changes to the staff. Now, will this have to be formally approved at our next meeting before it can be handed out?
I don't think so, I think for me, it's an advisory document. That's how I, I'd like to, for.
It's a visual interpretation of the zoning code.
That's the idea.
So just.
And I like the idea that we'll augment it regularly, and I think as we see something either that we do or don't like, we don't wait around.
So it can just change.
Rather than having it, you know, need to be subject to some lengthy approval process, we keep it more fluid.
So let's just make a commitment that we will review and provide recommendations to the staff within a week. And the staff would know that after a week, we've had time to review it and able to.
Frankly, we're kind of working on it daily, so we might send you guys updated versions too, so.
All right, good. So now let's go ahead and go back to the situation that the, let's go back to the situation at hand. I'd like to, it's not on the agenda, but I'll go ahead, if somebody wants to come and tell us about the project, I'll go ahead and let you speak about the project.
Fred on the firing line, huh? Not you?
Typically, it doesn't go after other business, usually other business is last.
Glad you got all of it up there. I'm Fred Clark, the engineer for the project. Couple of things to be aware of on this thing, we, when I talked to Dave and Cory up in the beginning, you have that project, Somerset.
Do you have a pointer there with red, do you want to? If you need it, you're welcome.
Somerset is it to the west. Yeah, and that project is in three phases and is twenty-five, it's about twenty-five point two acres. It's two hundred and one units, it's at eight units an acre, and you probably know that already. So that's all we did, was just mirror what it is an acre, so. Also with our buildings, what I did on the plat map, the buildings are, the lots are deep enough that we already are incorporating a two foot offset of each building. So that's already in the plan. Particular, but we've, I talked to Cory at the beginning, before the meeting, and addressed all the concerns that he had, so you've taken care of that, but we think we've got a good project. Oh, bring up some stuff on UDOT. You know, you've got that road that's come here, you can see the line there.
That one's in now.
Yeah, that's in, and that's going to curve, it's a curved road. And then they're going to tee off in this area and make a cul-de-sac out of this road. And so what our intent is to tie into that, and I've met with them twice, I met with half a dozen of their, their people there. And we're going to have a directional island there, they don't want any left-hand turns, they want right-hand turns only. And that's what we'll be doing there, and so, and they construct this, and they're hoping maybe in the next five years to do this road. And this will tie into that. So, so we've met with him several times, also the entrance is the only place, they want four hundred foot spacing, which this is the only place that can work for that piece, so.
What about with the future construction coming around here, the distance between here and here, Cory? You have.
Well.
What?
This, well, this road, yeah, this is built already here.
But as it comes around, I was asking Cory the distance between here and here, if that's going to be cause concern.
Well, the roads, oh, because the road's going to be moved up here.
So that, that would be UDOT's review with the road, but it is four hundred feet, but access spacing on UDOT. For a full access versus a ride-in, ride-out, which is what they would construct is shorter, so. So I, I think that would be okay, ride-in, ride-out, because of its proximity to US six would be why UDOT's saying it can only be a ride-in, ride-out.
Because that's what I suggested, we put an island, will it work, and they said, yeah, that's great. And I can't think of all the guys they had there, but anyway, they seem to be amenable to the whole project. So I just need to make the file corrections that Cory suggested and then get copies over there and present it to them, so. It's pretty straightforward. And I think we've got thirty-five percent green space, open space, to be, so.
You were calculating it back there, weren't you?
Oh, you got a lot, we have a lot there, so. And that's about it.
Thank you. Well, I guess, any questions?
No, I think, I think it makes sense to build that part out, it's consistent with the other.
Can I turn on the general plan for that, or the zoning for that area and make sure that it's?
So as they go.
What's this, what's our?
As they go into that, then would that be re-zoned then to R three is what we would end up doing?
Was it medium density?
What's the general plan designation for the city?
I think it's medium.
So how does that, does that fit within that terminology?
It's medium, right, Cory?
Correct, medium density.
So medium's up to eight units, five to eight units per acre, so R three.
Put the zones on the relevant.
I don't have any issues with it, so.
The next steps then, we'd schedule a public hearing for a zone change in your next meeting. If you haven't had a neighborhood meeting yet, next week.
I guess, I do have one question, just do they, do we need to have an exit going to the, to the east? Do they need to have two exits for this development?
Yes.
I miss that.
They do have to.
The way our construction status is written now, on single accesses for permanent can have thirty-five units.
Okay, thirty-five, I always thought it was.
Temporary can be up to fifty, so.
How many is this one?
How many units are?
Doesn't this already fit inside of the current zone? We just built it, it doesn't. We've changed the zoning regulations from wild, it's something, so, 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 okay, great.
How many units is this one proposed to be, sir?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
It fits for a temporary single access, knowing that something will be connected, but a permanent, thirty-five is kind of that talk.
I appreciate that, I think applicants do too.
Any other questions for the applicants? So I would just, I guess, make sure I'm not speaking for everybody, but everybody's okay with advising you that we're, we're okay with this concept to, okay? And then, Mr. Anderson, is there anything more than just basically giving our nods of approval to move forward with the concept, or?
That's, anything more than that probably inappropriate, so. So, I can take a few minutes to talk about walls.
Okay. Thank you.
And to try to just make the long story real short again. We as staff are asking the planning commission to zero in on a particular style of wall that we would adopt as the city standard that would be used by developers when they build a wall that we're going to own. We want something that's consistent for aesthetic purposes and maintenance purposes. And there are all different styles to choose from. I've got one specific image of a wall that a developer is currently constructing here in town that might be a good model to follow. I'm going to go ahead and give you my recommendation though as well.
As you're presenting this, can you let us know, I guess, kind of what spurred this conversation, do we have, and what are our concerns and what are, what are we trying to address? I mean, obviously there's a, an aesthetic that we're trying to reach, but also how about, I guess, height and durability, are we addressing that as well?
You know, most of what, in fact, I'll say this on the durability side. Cory knows more than I do, but as I understand it, basically, when it's a masonry wall, there are industry standards and it's very similar in terms of durability from a precast wall that one company might build to a precast wall that another company might build, so we don't expect there's a big difference there now.
The reason why I asked from a durability standpoint, and maybe I'm jumping in on your presentation, but do we look at it from protecting the citizens from maybe a vehicle on a major road versus in another area where we're just doing it because of sound or because of a barrier between two zones? So if there's a fence that we require between two zones, maybe that's not required to be as durable as one that's a barrier on a major road.
This is road, we're talking about walls to be installed on roads. I think that's a great thing to point out as well. And there, you know, we're not necessarily as concerned about a vehicle impacting it as we are simply having a really durable fence on a property line.
Falling down over time.
Yep, exactly, that, that keeps the sound out of the backyards as best as possible and, you know, kids then out of roads as best as possible and that type of a thing, so. Again, just talking about applications where the city will own the wall. And in short, and we kind of talked about this a little bit before, things that look less fake, I like. So Cory, can you go back, for example?
But how do we write that?
Well, that's a great question, and I think what we're looking for, and we'll say what I'm looking for, is for the planning commission to say, for example, you like this pattern in maybe this color or something like that. And then we tell developers, you find a wall manufacturer that builds to a certain spec with a pattern that looks like this and a color that looks like that, and that's what we approve.
Are you looking at the same color, one color or a couple colors, or?
I, from my perspective, and this is very subjective, but from my perspective, one.
So I know that some HOAs have. So I know that some HOAs have earth tones. There's a certain percentage of wood. So if we did one, would we, would that conflict potentially with some of the design patterns out there, I guess, for HOAs and stuff?
For all other elements in a project, for example, how people fence their backyards, or maybe wall off other things in a project, again, walls that are constructed someplace other than on a public right-of-way, where we end up owning it, they could do whatever they wanted. At least now, our ordinance allows that. So you could certainly still have all kinds of individuality within a neighborhood and a project, but on those public right-aways, it would be the same. Downside potentially with that, I kind of talked about, maybe monotony throughout the city. From my perspective, though, monotony would be superior to every four hundred feet, something different. And again, that's, that's subjective, but. And to talk about this, we really hadn't contemplated any kind of CMU, you know, which is just a masonry block. Kind of all ivory homes did that. And in my opinion, that's probably the best-looking wall that exists in this kind of setting, in any place in the city. We chatted a little bit about that before. So all that I have tonight are pre-cast. And I don't know cost-wise, how CD walls stack up with pre-cast, but all the newbies proposed to do has been the pre-cast, which makes me think that that's probably more cost-effective. But to put in a plug before the, the, the block walls, it's real, you know, and we kind of chatted about that. That, that has value, in my opinion. Repairing block walls, unless it's some kind of exotic split face kind of a thing, as I understand it, it's pretty easy to do when they're damaged. So, you know, maybe.
Probably not as easy as pulling out a panel and plopping a new panel in.
Yeah, maybe not.
Maintenance.
That being said, all that we've really considered, again, are pre-cast walls. There are two or three companies that supply walls in Utah counties, I think I'm learning. And can you go down to the last one, where we kind of have the patterns? You know, basically, I think we could pick from a palette of patterns like this and any of the others, and the wall suppliers in our area could come close to matching that, at least. Same with colors. Pretty broad palette, colors-wise. I'm going to say one more thing and then shut up. But if you can go back, maybe to the last slide that we had, again, I like stuff that looks maybe, and it's fake. It's all, it's all just that.
It's not, it's not true to the material. That's the terminology I would describe, how I described it.
That's, that's a really tasteful way to put it, right? But that's not stacked stones, you know? But that being said, trying to come up with something that looks, looks maybe less fake than other things. I don't know if it's the slide ahead of this one or behind it. I kind of like, for me, this looks a little bit more real, or something like that, than, for example, that does. Or, you know, like around the Pioneer Cemetery, if you've seen what we installed as the city there, which is kind of the big cobblestone-looking wall, it, it just clearly doesn't look real, you know?
And I think for me, it's that, it's that border. I think I would say that's, I, I agree with you. I think that looks better than that because of the, the lack of the border. It's a little more truer to the, to the material, or to what it's trying to represent, at least.
Well, that being said, this is what, what a developer's proposed to build most recently. In fact, they've ordered it. So one other thing to consider. This looks better than a lot of them do, in my opinion, but for whatever it's worth.
I, I, I have a hard time. I, I like your analogy that want it to look real, but I have a hard time, I guess, saying that it can't be fake, per se.
It's going to be fake.
But it's, but it's the look. I'm just, I mean, I don't, I don't mind this.
And that's why we're here. I mean, this is a very subjective thing, but in my opinion, it does really set, set an aesthetic tone for the community, and it's a land use thing, and that's why I feel like you're the appropriate body to say what the standard should be.
What I like about this is it looks like natural rock. To me, this is not our area, per se. I mean, it, we don't have rocks this dark in this area, right? I mean, that would be like putting sandstone St. George-looking stuff in Spanish Fork, Utah. I mean, things that are sandstone, St. George-looking belong in St. George. They don't belong in Spanish Fork. And so I would look at, this, to me, is indicative of the color of rock that you would find in our area.
That is outstanding reasoning, in my opinion. You have native vernacular stuff.
I agree. And I like the cap, the pre-cast concrete cap. It's a nice touch.
Well, the thing that I like about it is that there's variety in this. And if we're not going to have variety as we're driving down the road, not that it's not good to have everything be similar, but if I have to drive down miles of stretch that looks just like that, that is way boring to stare at, even though it looks nice. I mean, so even though you don't like the border, I still think, well, that border at least brings variety to my eye, which I like. But we don't have to do that because this one has variety in the brick itself. It has some big bricks and then smaller bricks.
I think they've accentuated it with different colors.
Colors, really.
Colors that match or fit.
Yeah, so I mean, I kind of like that. If we're going to go with something the same throughout the city, then let's choose something that has variety.
So to me, I would say that the rocks need to vary in size. So it's not like, these are all the same size. Go to that next slide that you just left. These are all the same size. So I would like to see patterns based.
It's more natural.
Yes, because if I'm going to go to a rock quarry, you're not going to get everything the same size at a rock quarry. So if you're looking for a natural look, I think we need to vary in sizes. I think we need to have color that we. I do like that one.
Do you like that one?
I'd go with that one.
I think we need to have color that, I think we need to have color. That is indicative to the natural environment around here, which is, I would say that a color can't vary more than, you know, I don't know how, certain, I don't know, here we go, go talking percentages again, but, you know, it can't vary too much from this. And then.
But we don't want it to be a painted wall either, you know?
But also, there's a little, there's a little, there's a little coloring differences within the wall. Like what Commissioner Tagg said, is that it can't be, I mean, if you were to look at this, there's four or five different colors within that that provide more of a natural look, I think, too.
Well, we can certainly match that, and the only other thing we might see is a slight derivation of that in terms of the pattern, maybe the colors, if it's a different company that makes it, but they can come close, I believe.
That's cool. I like that.
So honestly, if you guys like that, it's really easy for us to take the next step.
And then, we were just mentioning that these have some bigger stones, and when you say a variation in sizes, you probably, you know, going back to what we said a minute ago, so it was one inch of variation in size? So, I mean, we probably need to have something that if we're looking for a pattern or a variation, that we have something spelled out that it ends to be.
But honestly, picture a thousand words, a concept, right? This will be, that'll be what people are given, and they'll be told to match.
But you want something that matches that.
You know, we could probably even get the specs from the manufacturer of this and say, we want, can you give us a copy of the specs? Because we want to adopt it.
That's the idea.
Well, do you, do these have?
I think we use terms like, because.
Basis of design.
I don't like the idea of self-sourcing. Here is your pitch. You must buy it from.
This is the company we want.
And they're going to have variations, and they're going to patent their pattern, but they're, they aren't block-looking. They're stacked rock.
Do these things have guaranteed lifespan, like, standard if you order, is it a forty-year lifespan?
This is proposed standard.
We would have to ask about durability. I'm sure they've done studies, but I'm not familiar. Seems to me you could do with the walls, similar to what you've done here, which is you just get some minimum standards that meet your purpose.
For the durability side.
Yeah, and then just say.
This is good.
We'd like to see, you know, and, and that way, they have a little choice. You know, if you're the builder.
We did the road tour. We had the breakout group.
You want to meet the standard. You don't want to be required to spend a lot more than, you know, what this is, what they're used to doing, but it's good to have a standard that looks nice, and then it's some uniformity and.
I think it's worth noting along those lines, too, that what we're talking about there with that one, we know that's a very cost-effective thing for developers. We know it, so.
Since we're under, under, since we're under other business, is it okay if we move on? And I have another topic I'd like to discuss. Does anybody have anything else about the rock wall?
Do we have to approve anything on that?
It's just a discussion.
Well, I've heard that you're comfortable with that, and based on that, we're going to go with that.
Okay.
If you want to make a motion or something, you can.
I mean, where, where does it, where is it codified?
It's going to be in the construction standards.
Currently, and this is what we struggle in, I'm often the one looking at this, our code says a six-foot masonry wall.
That's it.
That's all.
End of story, with block, brick, or similar patterns as approved by city engineer Disney. And you can drive around town and see if we get it. It doesn't talk about colors and staining, which I think are important. And you can see that, what we have out there, that I think getting some consistency and creating a field is, is important. And outside of that, it really helps me as I'm reviewing and working with developers.
How about we just, so it's somewhat official, then, we'll just say, make a motion. I'll make a motion that, let's see, how would I say this? I'll make a motion that the proposed wall, as indicated in the picture, provided image tonight, that the staff add that to the construction standards, and to resemble different-sized rocks, and that the coloring, as indicated in the image provided, so.
Thank you. So that's a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second, and anybody oppose?
I'm not opposed. I think you'll have fleshed out language that we would approve more specifically.
Okay, moving on to the next item, then. I had a situation that I would like to just discuss with the group, and I was asking Commissioner Fallon if he's aware of anything. I don't know if I had the distinct honor, because, tell you what, it was a tough paper, but I worked with my kids writing a paper on solar energy. And during solar, solar energy, we, I dug through a lot of codes and ordinances in cities because we had to write one on social responsibility of solar energy. And when I'm reading through this, I can come to, we don't really have a lot in our city to prepare for potentially down-the-road solar energy. So to get ahead of the curve, I would like to ask staff to maybe look into it down the road, maybe having a working group. But to be socially responsible for, what are we going to allow for? Solar panels? The size of solar panels? Where can they be placed? There is a whole can of worms, similar to windmills and everything else that we've addressed in the past. But I think that if we're not careful, I don't, I don't want to use the careful, if we're not proactive in addressing solar energy and social responsibility of that, that it's something that I think we need to address, so.
So John Little and either Kelly Peterson, John Little's our building official. So then, either Kelly Peterson or Tom Cooper from our power department, they're the ones that you'd want to hear from on that. And I'd like to as well. Just today, we had somebody call, not about, about solar panels, which we allow now in the city, but about residential wind turbines, which we do not allow in the city. So it'd be good, maybe, to talk that through a little bit. There are a handful of homes in the city that have solar panels on them. A couple of businesses that have solar panels on them. And it, it's, it's interesting to hear about the pros and cons, and there's people's speculation as whether or not that's something that we're going to see a lot more of in the future, or not so much, kind of like, like we have seen. But there are some real issues as well that come into play, things that I wouldn't necessarily have thought about in terms of just the, the functionality and the safety of putting panels on a house, and what happens to wind load and different things like that. It's, it's not quite as simple as I would have thought, but that's a great topic to, to talk about.
In Rocky Mountain Power, I know they have incentive programs and other things available, and that'd be, you know, being that we're on our own grid, how does that, you know, that would be a question I would have.
We're obligated to do some of the same things as Rocky Mountain Power, by way of, net metering is basically what power providers, as I understand it, are required to do, which means you have to pay people a certain amount for power that they generate with their system that ends up back in your system. So you have a meter that measures both ways, and they get a credit and so forth. And the, the theory is that if they're generating enough power, and maybe with solar, that only operates when there's sun shining, so they're putting power back on the system during the day, that they're getting enough credit for that power, that then when they're using power during the evening, it's a wash. And I'm no expert there, but I understand it typically doesn't quite work out that way.
There is some legal aspects of it as well.
There certainly are, yeah.
Because we had to write the paper on economical impact, environmental impact, and social impact. And the economical impact, too, is that we still have to maintain that. So even if you're using a seventy, eighty percent of your home is solar, you still have a legal obligation to maintain, and these are numbers are not, I'm using these as examples. So somebody out there watching is like, no, no, that's not true. These are examples. But you have a legal obligation to maintain a certain amount of traditional power.
Well, one of the hot topics with the state legislature now is how much should people be charged to be connected to the grid? And if they do, for example, have some type of power generation on their site. Rocky Mountain Power apparently charges people more for that connection on the basis that, hey, just because you're producing power at your home, that doesn't lessen our need to maintain this big grid that we have. So you need to pay your proportionate share. Hot topic, definitely. Francis Gibson, our representative from, lives in Mapleton, part of the city, took a pretty strong stand with the Public Utilities Commission on that. We just heard from him a couple of weeks ago speak about that. Very interesting topic, in my opinion.
And I think it's a very huge topic, and I just think that we, it, I mean, we're talking, it might take months and years to look at, but it's something we probably need to just start in our discussion processes.
It will not go away. It's here to stay.
Any other comments for the commission, from anybody, before we adjourn for the night? Then I will make a motion to close and adjourn this meeting for March 2nd, 2016.
Second.
And we have a second, and this meeting is closed.